Good evening, everyone. It's 6 o'clock. And I'm going to call this meeting to order. It's January 29th, Committee of the Whole Meeting. And we have approval of the agenda, which is moved by Counselor LeBlanc and seconded by Counsel Rowley. The committee approved the January 29th, 2020 Committee of the Whole Meeting agenda as presented. All in favor? And do we have any declarations of pecuniary interest? Shall we wait? Go ahead and make your...
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. If anything pops up about the Hilton Cemetery, I'm a member of the Board of Directors for St. Andrews United Church, which owns and operates Hilton Cemetery.
Counsel Anderson?
I wish to declare a pecuniary interest should the topic or the subject propose a sidewalk in Smithfield on Cora Pine Ridge School property at taxpayer's expense go on property next to my property, which I'm a partner of. So I'm declaring if should any discussion be on that subject.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Welcome. Okay. Four delegations. We don't have any delegations. And then we have citizens' comments. And I have one from David Green, who would like to make a comment on budget considerations. Did you want to come forward?
Thank you. During these budget discussions, would you please consider updating the various directional signs around town? There are probably four or five signs that direct people, primarily visitors, to our various entertainment and eatery destinations. We've got signs on Prince Edward Harbor Street, a couple on Highway 2, one down by Presqueal. And they still show signs for Dougal's Wayne's Greenhouse. We can probably do better than that. And I'm thinking that the Whistling Duck may actually like some positive advertising. So if we could put some money aside for that, I think that would be a good update for our community and won't have visitors wandering around looking for places that don't exist.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you want to comment?
I'm not supposed to.
No, I didn't think so.
No, we'll get to it.
Yeah, we'll talk about it later. And I have a motion moved by Counsel Rowley, seconded by Counselor LeBlanc, that counsel receive the citizens' comment at the January 29th, 2020 Committee of the Whole Budget Meeting. All those in favor? Carried? Okay, so next item is staff reports. And tonight, we're talking about operating. And on page 21 starts... So we have some detailed pages, sorry, not detailed, our summary before that, which we'll use when we're doing some deliberations. But if we go to page 21, we start with general government. Hoping to get through this tonight. But I did promise our Economic Development Department that we would get to his tonight because his family is soon going from three to four. And he doesn't want to miss a meeting. So if we can get to economic development tonight, we'll start on the first few. But if we find it's taking a bit of time, we may skip ahead to make sure we get it done tonight. And so we're going to start with general government. And I believe either Candace or Linda, if you wanted to make any comments on that or before counsel asks questions?
I would just like to talk about one of the items that is a new initiative in the general government budget because I believe that it's going to be impactful to our... the way we operate our business for the municipality. And that is using some of the modernization funding for operating. There has been some discussions with a local fiber provider. And the cost of the infrastructure is nothing for us. However, the cost of our monthly costs will go up substantially. I'm just looking for the table in the executive summary where I talked about using the modernization funding a little bit at a time to soften the blow to the taxpayer annually and build up to that. It's on page 11. I called it a connectivity phase in. And so our provider costs are going from $18,285 up to $52,200. And because that's so substantial, the discussion is to use some of the modernization funding a little bit each year to soften the blow so that the increase for the cost, the annual cost, is $5,200 per year and for the first two years and then $7,000 per year for the last two years. So I thought that was an important project to talk about because the buildings that we're talking about connecting to fiber will include not only were already connected here at Alice Street and at Sharp Road, but it will also include the Fire Hall, the arena, the North Fire Hall, the North Shop, Memorial Park with fiber, also some access points in Memorial Park or in the downtown area to enable us to have Wi-Fi that's free. It will also include increasing our bandwidth for municipal purposes, which I think will help us a great deal with the number of programs that we're running. So I thought that was an important initiative to highlight.
Thank you. Yeah, I think that is actually very important. Any questions from counsel? Go ahead, Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So would this allow for the use of or the access to Wi-Fi at the arena? Will that be something that happens?
Well, there is access to Wi-Fi at the arena currently at the community center.
No, this, I'm talking about the arena. I was approached by someone from Minor Hockey yesterday who asked if we would be permitting access to Wi-Fi at the arena because all of the things that used to be on paper for minor hockey initiatives are now required through download from the Minor Hockey Association.
Then that would be an access point?
Yeah.
Simply an access point.
So we would be considering Wi-Fi in the arena for that purpose? Okay, good. So just as a follow-up to that, would we consider partnering with the library to allow them access to this fiber? Right now, I think they use some sort of third-party to access. And I'm just wondering if we could partner with the library and maybe ask for some assistance, dollars and cents assistance from the library because right now, they're paying an outside provider.
The library has an outside provider for internet, and it is coaxial. It's not fiber. They have been provided the opportunity twice. And if they choose to join with this building's fiber, that opportunity is there for them at any time.
Awesome. I hope we reach out to them again with this new initiative as well to help offset our costs and help them with a more robust internet service.
Thank you. Counsel Anderson?
You just, you mentioned, I think Cotterington, or you didn't say Cotterington, but you mentioned the North Fire Hall. So is the fiber already in place there? Do you know? I know they ran the lines on the telephone lines, but is it already there?
My understanding is that work with Penitentiary already has fiber. And so the fiber runs already along Highway 30, which makes it a lot more reasonably cost, a reasonable cost for the provider to run it to our Fire Hall and to run it to our North Hall, our North Public Works Hall.
That's good because the more that you can get up there, it might be good for the folks that live up there, too. Because fiber is a copper, right? It's just a line.
I'm not sure about that.
It's not wireless.
That would be up to that provider.
That's good.
Any other questions from counsel on Counsel Bateman?
For Cotterington, I think when we are the AGM, that's through the public library again, though, right? For the internet?
Some of it. But I think we have access because it's alternate. Help me out, Chief.
If I may, through you, Deputy Mayor. At the Fire Hall, we currently have just a private provider, ExploreNet. And that's the only internet that we have at the North Fire Hall, which is much less than reliable. And during our emergency exercise, we certainly identified that as one of our serious issues is we have very limited internet in that operation center. So fiber would be a great enhancement for that facility.
I think the question was specific to the Cotterington Community Center. Are they, is that building part of our emergency plan?
It can be used as a meeting place for media. But as far as us using it for operations, no.
So the only internet is through the library then?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the general government budget? That anyone has right now? Just that one we're... No? 21, yeah. Go ahead, Counsel LeBlanc.
Through you, Deputy Mayor, to the CIO. We're still on community government. The newly positioned for management and recording, we've been trying to get that position filled for two years. Is that still on the book for this year?
Good question.
Record management position, we're trying to get it filled for two years.
Yeah, so through Madam Deputy Mayor, my intention is to come before counsel in an in-camera setting shortly, probably next week, to talk about a number of different HR issues. That'll be one of them.
Okay, so we're going to move on to health services on page 23. Linda, your name is on here. Any comments that you wanted to make on this?
No, not at this time.
Well, it's a decrease, so... Go ahead, Counsel Tadman.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Because so many people have asked, are we... And this isn't budget material, but just if the mayor has any information about a nurse practitioner, any movement forward? Because there's some people that are desperate to even get their prescriptions filled and people that are quite sick. So nothing's moved forward, no news?
My understanding is Dr. Gao was interviewing nurse practitioners. They would report to her. But I would defer to the CIO.
Deputy Mayor, a report will be coming forward next Monday. Dealing with this issue, as you're aware and counsel is aware, we've been negotiating back in December, made a decision back in December. And pleased to advise you that I've hammered out a lease agreement and a medical service agreement that'll come before you on Monday for approval. But it's a go for sure.
Okay, so at least I can reassure them that we're almost there. Okay, thanks.
Any other questions on this? Comment? Go ahead.
So it is showing a decrease right now. But please bear in mind that we haven't added the hospitals and the donations to the hospitals, which will change that number.
Okay. They're not showing... Go ahead.
And they don't show in the 2019 budget that I'm looking at here either, do they? Or do they?
Not in this section.
Because they show up in grants later on.
They actually show up in this line. So the health services expenditures, that's not the Brighton Health Service Center, but that's the physician. Now, it looks strange this year because we are anticipating, not anticipating, we will be getting $200,000 back from two physicians. And that $200,000 is budgeted to be transferred to the Medical Services Reserve Fund. And so if you take that out of there and you add in the fact that we've put some money in here for the agreement with Dr. Gao, still the hospital donations would be in this budget line but are not showing at this moment.
Understood. Thank you.
Can you just say that again? I just want to know, the health services revenue, the $200,000, I understand that's the money we're getting back. The health services expenditures for 2020, the $245,000, what is that, then?
So that is $200,000 going to a reserve from the $200,000 that you just received in revenue, which you haven't received, but we're pretending that. And then the other $45,000, we're pretending it right at the moment.
Pretending. Yeah, I think predict is the better word.
Predicting that. The $45,000 that's left there, sorry. We're predicting it, yes. Can we scratch that record? The $45,000 that remains includes some monies to support Dr. Gao's agreement. And I think that we may have anticipated a similar agreement with another physician.
So again, for clarity, you're talking about the money that we give to the hospitals. I thought, I read that somewhere else, though, in another section, but...
At the end of Grants and Aid, very back of the budget.
Okay. But we do have an amount there that we normally... What did we give last year or 2019? Do you know that? Do you have it there? Just for reference. It's okay. We can, I know I read it the other day, so it's in there. Schedule A. Okay? Yes. Let's move on to fire. Chief Caddick, if you wanted to, if there's anything there that you wanted to highlight or... $34,000? Okay. Let's pretend. Pretend it's $34,000.
Okay, Deputy Mayor, thank you. Nothing major to highlight, normal increases, wages, et cetera. The only, one of the increases we did was the training aspect. And the reason we did that, a couple of things. Number one, the province has finally opened up the training again for ice and water rescue. It was in abeyance for two years. So that is open. So we need to get some people in that training because we were the last ones to get before they shut it down. So we've still got a group of about 12 members that need that training. So that course is going to be running probably within the next two months. So we want to, so there is an increased cost for that for this year.
So when we see the increase of 21%, that's the training cost, pretty much, is it? For firefighting expenses? Yep.
The cost to equipment reserve, of course, is that is the, if I'm correct, Linda, that is the debt repayment for the new trucks and that we've been in. And that's...
The $35,000, yeah.
Yeah, so that's what all adds up.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions from counsel at this point? You want to trade places? That's what I thought. Okay. Next, we have police services. I get questioned about this often. People always want to know why we're not negotiating something better, why, you know, why it goes up, why it goes down, why don't we do this, why don't we do that? If perhaps the CIO or Linda could explain how the police contract works and what options we have, I guess, in negotiating that. And if you look at it this year, there is quite an increase. But we've had other years that we've had decreases. So just give us a bit of an idea.
Perhaps we're going to do a bit of a tag team here. Certainly, I brought a report before counsel for their consideration on a five-year renewal for the OPP services back in November-ish. And next week, we have representatives from the OPP to come forward as a delegation to answer some of those questions that have been raised both tonight and also at the time when we renewed the contract. So I think we're going to have a fulsome debate or fulsome discussion on the third with respect to where we are from an OPP standpoint and perhaps where we're going, what flexibility that we have with respect to service levels. Do we want to increase them? Do we want to decrease them? So I think it's important to, you know, hear from the horse's mouth with respect to what their findings are, I suppose, and to give counsel an opportunity to answer any questions that you may have. So that's coming on the third, next Monday.
Thank you. I recall in that meeting, we did have a discussion about wanting more services and then what that would cost us and that sort of thing. But this budget that we've been given, what are the changes that make up the difference in cost? Is there something that we can pinpoint?
Sure. So obviously, the policing cost, the contract went up. But we also had an adjustment from a prior year where in most cases, especially at the beginning of a contract where they front-end a lot of the increases, you'll see rebates each year. This year, we actually saw an adjustment for more costs because we didn't pay them enough last year or two years ago. So that's where you'll, if you see the little box or table that's on this page, the adjustment from that prior year is $38,424. So it actually increases our policing costs for the contract for this year more so than it will be for next year. Fortunately for this municipality and since 2009, we've been taking some of those policing increase rebates and putting them back into that policing reserve for this particular reason. And so now, we have the opportunity to transfer from that policing reserve and then lessen the impact to the taxpayer annually for a few years. So rather than going up $105,000 in this one year, we'll use, or $130,000-ish.
Yeah, $127,000, yeah.
Yeah. We're going to use, or recommending to use $105,000 from the policing reserve to lessen that impact. So it's $22,374 to make that a little bit more palatable.
Great, thank you. Questions from counsel? Counsel Rowley?
Thank you, Laura. Reading some of the AMO emails that we've been getting recently, there seems to be some discussion regarding recomposition of the detachment boards in the, which will kind of amalgamate some, as I understand it. Will that have any cost effect to us at some point? Or how will that work?
I think the discussion that I was reading from the AMO paper was that the Police Services Board would amalgamate to match what the detachment boards look like or the detachments look like. And so Northumberland Detachment has several police service boards within it. And I believe the mayor might have more information. Oh, thank you. There's five, I thought. Okay. So that will save us on the Police Services Board side at some point once that consolidation takes place.
Did you want to comment at all or...
Just to say, it won't affect, it won't change the contract. We'll still be required to pay the contract. The only discussions currently that are being had, and I mentioned this last night at the CCA AGM, is the board composition. Under the Police Services Act, the Section 10 would have three local and two provincial representatives. And the five mayors that have contracts in Northumberland County met with the Solicitor General at Roma and asked for a nine-person complement, five local, four provincial. The Solicitor General seemed amenable to that. But there's a lot of legalese in the background, her word. So we're in the slow motion of the wheels of government, I think, while we wait and see. I think the real issue is not Northumberland County, which will be one of the smaller contracted detachments. It's places like Hastings County with 14 contracts that they worry about. If they do this for us, what do they have to do for them? And do they get a 21-person board, right? Because that's their problem. We just hope that Northumberland gets a fair shake.
And I guess to that locally, I just hope we don't lose representation based on a few dollars that we do pay for the Police Services Board that somehow we can figure out how to, whether or not we get on the board, that we can still have our own representation to bring to the board.
Any other comments on this? Okay, we're going to move.
Our contract is the bare bones contract. We don't have any extras in our policing contract. So for those who are wondering if we have options, the only option is to go up, not down. And under the Police Services Act, we can't even go to another force to ask them to bid because we're required under the act to go to a municipality that borders us. All of our bordering municipalities are OPP contracts. So unless Quinney West were to contract with Belleville, at that point, we could ask Belleville to quote. But that's not an option for Brighton. So we're stuck with OPP. And you know what? They do give us decent service at the end of the day.
Yes, they do. Okay, Public Works. We have quite a bit here. Preston, is there anything you wanted to comment on?
Through you, Deputy Mayor. Only the two major cost increase are the staff positions that were added and the two reorgs and the winter control budget. It's been raised up to better align with what we've been spending in previous years. And that's it at this time.
Thank you. Any questions from counsel? Okay. Let's move on to the next one. It's bylaw enforcement. Candace, your name is on this. Did you want to comment at all or anything there that we need to know? Any questions from counsel at all? Counsel Tadman?
I know that the bylaw officer wages aren't going to be paid by the fines. But it doesn't seem like a very high number of, according to how much net revenue we got. I'm just wondering, is there any way that maybe we could make sure that... I know we can't do it 24/7, but I often get complaints that people are parking where they're not supposed to. And downtown is the worst place. So I'm just wondering, is there any way in that maybe up to the CIO and the Director of Public Works? I don't know, but...
Sure, I'm happy to comment on that through you. Bylaw enforcement in this municipality and many municipalities across Ontario is based upon a complaint.
I know.
It's complaint-driven. And if I was a bylaw enforcement officer and I wanted to go to every property, including yours, I could find something. And I don't think we want to be...
No, I'd shoot you.
I don't think we want to be there, quite frankly. I don't think that's a, I don't think that's a fair representation, what we're trying to accomplish. Our goal is to have compliance. And our goal is not, from a bylaw enforcement standpoint, to gain revenues. But our goal, as I said, is compliance. So until counsel chooses to change the policy from a complaint-based system, we have what we have. And if we want to move away from that, I'm happy to bring some further options for your consideration.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So on the, you know, our wish is for compliance, the subject of compliance, I have asked in the past and will ask again, has there been any consideration given to hiring an outside agency for certain enforcement issues? And I'm not talking about property standards or anything like that. But I would think things like parking, for example, a group like, well, I won't name it, but there are security organizations that can be hired to issue fines for parking enforcement. And I don't believe that that would be a net revenue. I think that would cost us more. But at least we would then get parking enforcement in the downtown, for example.
My only comment is that's certainly an option. That would be an enhanced level of service. And of course, that's up to you. And of course, that's up to you to adjust the service levels, but certainly that could be a topic during our in-camera discussion next week.
Councilor Tadman?
Thank you. Well, and we have, we have someone downstairs now protecting the building because we've had so, so much problem. But we also have a lot of vandalism down at, to the arena and up at, especially at Memorial Park. So what you're saying, Mayor, maybe we should consider as a council, because I don't expect the bylaw officer to be out at night and that's usually when the fun begins. But we also have to protect our residents and our properties. So whether that, I guess, I know more cameras will help, but cameras don't stop them as they're destroying something. And it's, it's, it's not, it's not pleasant for, as of, I think it was yesterday or whatever, I left here and I'm walking, yeah, I had a meeting yesterday. And kids are kids, but it was really foul language and just outside the door. It's not my first rodeo here and somebody swear and I probably have used the odd word myself. I know, it's confession time. But that's the kind of thing that, you know, we, we can't expect to call the police every time something, but it, it's not fair, especially to older people, to have to come and listen to that kind of stuff. There's places for those kids to go, so it's almost, even if we did a short-term thing to get them directed in the right area, because it doesn't say much for the, our presentation at the front of this building. And, you know, there was a beer can sitting there and they were vaping and they had the music, real filthy stuff coming out of their, whatever device they had.
Yeah, I think this is a bigger conversation than just bylaw, but.
Yeah, but it's all, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, that's right. Good time to talk about it on Monday.
Yeah, sure.
That's what we're going to do. Any more bylaw questions before we move to the next section? No? Okay. Next is the building. Any comments, Linda, on the building or really it's pretty self-explanatory? Any questions from council on this section? Going, going, gone. Parks and Rec. We've got a lot here. Any comments on that, Jim, that?
Not at this time, it's fairly.
Very self-explanatory. Questions from council at all on this section? Well, it must be self-explanatory. No questions. Planning. Who do we have that's going to comment on planning? If needed.
Sure, I'll, I'll, through you, I'll, I'll jump in here and talk a little bit about planning. Planning, quite frankly, is a concern of mine. I'll be addressing it during the camera session that I have with council. So I have a number of different issues and a number of different concerns with respective planning. It's the planning budget that's before you is, there's some risk associated with it, particularly as, as you know, from the revenue perspective, we've made a decision with respect to the collection of back fees dating back to plus or minus June of 2018. So this budget before you is somewhat precipitated on the collection of those fees. So there is some risk associated with this budget. I'd be happy to go into further details as we deliberate next week.
Any questions at this point? Clarification? Go ahead, Councilor LeBlanc.
Through you, Deputy. Some of our fees that we collect for, for planning, is it through development charges? Do we get any, has any money revenue come? Where does the development charges go?
Development charges comes in as revenue when a, when a project that was identified within the study is being undertaken. So for example, Sanford Street is identified in the development charges study, so there's a certain percentage that's attributed to growth and therefore we can take some of our development charges for that. It doesn't usually end up as revenue in planning. Development charges study, when we undertake it, is usually under administration because it's a more of a financial role with assistance from every, every department, big assistance from every department. But it doesn't usually end up in planning at all because they have no infrastructure.
Any other questions about planning? Does anyone else hear that, like the building's going to take off or?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're good. Okay, next, economic development. Ben, did you have something to add or tonight?
Yeah, just a couple notes here. So with respect to the Chamber of Commerce proposal of $26,500 that was given back before Christmas, that included a variety of different services that they were to provide in that proposal. It is recommendation of staff that council look at a pared-down approach of about $16,000. That will include some of the noted services, but not all. Staff with the support of council will look to more, more partnership ideas with the chamber where some dollars and additional resources can have a more permanent and non-seasonal impact to the community. To go with that, it was announced at the Bay of Quinney Regional Marketing Board meeting yesterday that their per capita funding would freeze for all partners at a dollar, $1.55 instead of the $1.80 that was originally illustrated in our MOU. So the freeze will keep the annual total of the partnership agreement at $18,358.20 instead of a $21,695.20 for a savings of $3,337.
Yeah, thank you for that. So that's the tourism and promotion section. And because we supported having the chamber take care of Applefest last year, that $10,000 is already in Applefest. It was just the, the $14,000 surplus that was here, correct? From their, their offer? Because the $2,500 is in awards as well, right? Somewhere?
Yeah, the $2,500 is in active administration, membership and dues.
Okay, so it's already there because we've done it for a few years?
That's right.
So it's just the additional amount that they ask, I think what was, was 14, is, is sitting in that tourism promotion budget right now?
Yeah.
Right?
So, yep.
Okay. Any questions at this time? Go ahead, Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. And certainly I want to, I want to be partnering with groups like the Chamber of Commerce and specifically for this kind of purpose. I think it makes a lot of sense. I've read through the proposal they submitted and it seems light on deliverables. And I'm wondering if, if council agrees and would maybe like to see the chamber provide a more robust proposal to us, specific to that. I mean, I, I don't think we need to change the other things they've offered us, but I have some thoughts, but I, I thought maybe during the deliberations, we can kind of discuss those thoughts and kind of see where we come out. Perfect.
For now, is there any other questions for Ben on this section of the, the budget? Go ahead, Councilor Rowley.
You mean, you mean the whole economic and community development section?
You betcha.
Okay, so one question, Ben. You've been here a little while now, doing a good job. When will we be creating our Economic Development Committee?
So in the strategic plan, I believe that was outlined, was it last spring? It has a spring 2020 sort of timeline for the Economic Development Committee and we're very much so sticking to that timeline.
Okay, thank you for that. One more question, or it's more of a comment. And I left some paperwork home earlier. Has to do with, under the heading, nominal changes. I believe you were, you all received a narrative this week from the Chair of the Community Events Committee. Under civic awards, it's, we have a total of $2,000 for every other year because we only have the event every other year. However, it would be suggested by not only myself, as I sit on that subcommittee, but our, but the, most of the members of our committee, $2,000 is not enough to run any kind of event. What we would suggest is that we could put $2,000 every year in the budget, which would give us then $4,000 for our every other year expenditure. So if we could change that $2,000 from every second year, just annually, that would be appreciated at this time. I might have some more comments at our next meeting as, like I said, I left my paper at home.
So we will be deliberating this?
Oh, that's not for now? That's for later?
Well, at some point, either tonight or, but right now, we're just getting clarification questions and then we will discuss it.
Okay, I'm just clarifying that now.
Exactly, thank you. Councilor Tadman?
This isn't a question at all, but I've wondered, because we haven't been Winterfest for 10 years, maybe we should take that out of here in the line. I, I think it's in reserves, that it's a zero balance. It's about time we got rid of it because we don't, we don't do anything for Winterfest.
Winterfest here? I don't see it either.
But if there's any money in reserve.
Where are you seeing Winterfest?
It's just near the bottom, new initiatives.
I see what you mean, yeah. In reserves. Any other questions at this point? Go ahead, Councilor Bateman.
The question, and thank you, Deputy Mayor, is really around, we need the Economic Development Committee and Ben answered that question, but we're going through them section at a time. Are we going to look at committees as a whole? Because when you go through them, well, there's a substantial increase overall to the cost of committees, quite a bit. I don't know the percentage, but it's.
When we deliberate, we can talk about each of the committees if we like and we can talk about the committee we're on if there's an issue and we can ask questions then of each other and decide what we're going to do with those. Right now, we just kind of want to just get through, get our questions of staff and then we can start talking about them. Preston, did you want to add anything or?
No, not at this time.
Any questions for Preston about the environmental services at this point? Okay, so that's kind of our overview right now of everything. So we'll move into deliberating. So there's the larger summary pages, it's easier to go off of that, maybe? Yeah. So there's the, the large summary pages after, we can start going through there. I'd like us just to start with economic development if we can, that way we get that done tonight and then we'll, for Ben's sake, and then we can, we'll go back to the first page. If everyone's okay with that. Just need to find it. Yeah, I think let's go back. Yeah, I think the narrative page is easier. I don't know, I can't find it. I had it out today, maybe that's why. It's probably sitting on my, on my counter. Okay. Is everyone ready? Do we have economic development? I've gone back to these pages, it seems to be easier. Page 33 is economic development and community development. Okay, so here we have a total budget for 2020 of $295,000 currently. We've already talked about a few changes in a few thousand or less for, in the tourism and promotion line for the Bay of Quinney Marketing Board. And then we also have the chamber proposal in here and we have Applefest. Just, I have the chamber proposal here, I think it was 26,500 they're asking for, for various different items. We could certainly ask them to come back. And myself, in looking at it, I certainly support the chamber and would love to continue to build on our relationship with them, but I'm just not sure, I wasn't comfortable from what we were given to maybe go this route yet. Certainly, we would like to continue our relationship with them as far as Applefest. I'm thinking that maybe we could go, bump that up to 11,000. These are just my thoughts and we can certainly discuss it. And of course, the sponsorship, the $2,500 for the awards, we want to keep as well. And then in that tourism promotion line, I see some real value in the, the guide, the visitor's guide. But as Ben had mentioned, I mean, he's new. It'd be great to give him some time to kind of see where we're lacking as far as tourism. Maybe we can come up with some plans and look at something again next year. That's just my thought right now. Any, I'd love to hear other people's comments on that. So that would be, sorry, so basically, I'm looking at just putting in that tourism promotion, just 2,500 for the chamber contract. We have the 11 elsewhere and the 2,500 elsewhere and then Bay of Quinney Marketing Board at that rate, the 18,000, I think it was, something that we were told, so go ahead.
Thank you again, Deputy Mayor. I, I kind of have to agree with you at, at this stage and the fact that we have been here now and, as you say, I think we get pretty good value as far as tourism and marketing goes, not only from maybe QEDC or from, from the county, but also with the Bay of Quinney Tourism. And when we see what we spend there, I think we get a bit better value for the dollars that maybe the chamber could offer at this stage. The same, I'm not ready to walk away from any partnership with the chamber. However, I think we take another year and just kind of look a little closer at, at what they're offering so far.
Yeah, I, I have no doubt that we need to do better locally at some real local tourism promotion. But I just, I think we might need a little bit more time to figure out what that looks like. That's, that's my only comment. Any other comments from council on this or we can move on to something else if we're, yeah, go ahead, Councilor Tadman.
I totally agree with both of what you've addressed here. And I read somewhere about three kiosks that the chamber want. That, that just blows my mind. I can't, I, I never see anybody at them except the one at, by the birdhouse, but that's where all our tourism is anyways, on the way to Presque. So I certainly wouldn't support putting monies towards having two more. And also, I support council when they make a decision, but I don't see the value from the Quinney Region Marketing, but I will, only because it's already, the majority voted on that. But I, I think that we're well looked after with both Northumberland and, and the Quinney economics. So, and with now our own here, I think we're covering it very well.
Okay. Go ahead, Councilor Anderson.
I agree with what you've come up with here. I know what they're trying to do though is with the kiosks, because they have, their present location, it isn't inviting to the tourist or the, the traveling public or even our local people, probably don't even know they're there. So I think the idea of the kiosk is, is to try and get in the face of tourists and, and they can get the students, they're saying that here, that they can get the funding for three students. So that would fill the manpower to do that. So I think that's something that we can, we might think about, that where we can help them in the future with their, where they, where they want to settle. I don't believe they're settled yet. So I think that's what they need to work on is a good storefront and where everybody can walk in and get information and, and not just tourists, though. They service a lot of the businesses in town as well. That's, I think that's their first mandate, pretty equal with tourism, is to take care of their, the stores and the industrial and small business. So, so I think we can work with them on that. So I think you addressed one, two, and three, and I think you've hit it right on the nose where I feel comfortable and I think they'll feel comfortable that we're working with them this year a little bit more. And, and somebody, you said, made point, Northumberland, I don't think we're getting it. I know they're there and I know they do a lot of tour. I know they're there, and I know they do a lot of tourism promotion, et cetera. Perhaps we need to knock on their door a little bit more to get a little more at this end of the county. They do a lot in the forest and a lot at that end of the county. So if we can work with the Bay of Quinney, and we can work with Northumberland and do what we're doing here, I think we'd be really strong, actually.
Sure, yeah. Did you have something, Mayor? Go ahead.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Right now, of course, we only see traffic at the one kiosk, because there is only one kiosk.
At three, we don't see one.
Well, perhaps. I don't know if that's, that would prove itself out. We used to have, back in the 80s, we used to have a kiosk in Memorial Park, and it was very busy, because that's where people would come from downtown. So I'm not unconvinced that this is... I am convinced that this is not a bad idea. It's probably a good idea to go down the road. I just want to know, at the end of the day, if we're investing the $26,500 or whatever the full amount is, does that include Applefest?
Yes.
Yeah. So the, what is it, the, an additional 10, give or take, right? Right? Yeah. What are we getting? What is our return on investment? What are the, and what are the, what are the KPI, what are the key performance indicators? How do we know we've had value for money? I don't have an issue investing in something. I want to know that we've received value for it, so we can make a good decision the next year on whether or not we continue going down this road. So I don't see that in this proposal. So if Counsel's not willing to have them come forward and offer that, offer a more robust proposal, then I would agree that we continue to doing what we have done in the past, and we move forward with that. But if Counsel's wish is to have them come forward and offer those KPIs, my worry is we've done this before, and what we've received back from the group is, you kind of, "Trust us, you know, we'll be fine." And that's not okay. And we, what we would be looking for if we invited them back, and it would have to be made clear to them, we're looking for, you know, check the boxes. We want to know what we're getting for our money, and what are those key performance indicators, and how do we know that investment's taking place? So I'd leave that up to Counsel to decide if that's the route we want to go, or if we just want to cut it.
No doubt that there's lots of good ideas here, and there's lots of other things that we can be doing. I think we just have to kind of take our steps towards that. On that note, just as a matter of explanation, so that we know that there are other possibilities, because of course, we need... Sorry, I'll just backtrack. When we're talking about the contract that we have with Bay of Quinney Marketing Board, and the reason why they froze the rates is because last year, Belleville and Trenton introduced MAT tax, which is a municipal accommodations tax, and the province allows that to happen. The only thing is, the regulation is that it needs to be spent 100% on tourism. So now, they're receiving some of those funds for that, and we may be having a discussion this year as well about that. And that would provide us some tourism money to, which we can decide how we're going to spend it, but that could be something that we could put into some of these other ideas, these other, like, kiosks. So I just don't want to jump the gun. I think we just need to kind of work our way into this, back into this area, but make sure we're making good fiscal, responsible decisions. So that's my thoughts. Go ahead, Counsel Rowley.
I totally agree with you on that. I think we take another year to really look at all of our options now that we have been here. It seems like he's had some good discussions and bringing forward some good ideas. So I think we give Ben an opportunity, and I think we kind of, like, flesh out some of this, the good and bad stuff, or where we're getting value and maybe where we're not. And I think we give it another year. See where we go then.
All right. Go ahead, Counselor Tadman.
Up until last year, the Applefest Committee looked after the day of, and my understanding is that $10,000 that we approved of last year was for that day alone?
No.
Can you explain? Because people want to know, why all of a sudden are we paying Chamber to do the job that the Applefest Committee always did?
Because the Applefest Committee is totally overloaded. We had an amazing Chair who took on pretty much a full-time job in order to get, make Applefest happen, and we weren't able to get the volunteer power to do that again.
Okay.
And it's a ton of work. We don't have the staff here to take care of it, and it's not just the day of, it's taking in all the applications, arranging for everything, doing the promotion, and all the paperwork that's involved ahead of time and on that day, which they, we made them bring in their own volunteers so that we didn't have to go and find them. So you can talk to anyone who's involved in the Applefest Committee. It became this huge, huge job, and there was no way we could do it with the staff that we had. Jim is back there agreeing with me, because he's on the committee, too. It's just, we had no choice. We had to do it in order to keep, we want to keep Applefest going. We have some new ideas. We just need the manpower to make it happen.
Thank you for explaining that, and hopefully, the public will hear that, because I was pretty sure of that, but they said, "Why are we paying them $10,000 for the day?"
Yeah, I know.
And the other thing, so that, you're suggesting more money? Why more?
Why are we suggesting the 11?
Yeah.
I guess just because it's a huge job. Really, you know, they hired someone, they paid all that out to someone to do all this work for them, and it's just, part of the request was that it was a bit more work and time than what they thought it would be for the 10. $10,000 sounds like a lot. When you're paying someone to work, you know, three, four days a week for however many months to get it done, you know, it does, it does go quickly. So that's my suggestion. Counsel, you know, it's up to Counsel what we decide to go with. Just follow up, yeah?
Yeah, just further to that then, so what was the logic, really, that the Chamber, what are they promoting as far as Chamber goes with Applefest?
I think what it is, is many Chambers in many communities are also the event coordinator for the town, for the city, whatever. And our thought was that, you know, we're growing. This would be a really good way to go, to have a Chamber that could do some event coordinating for us. So that's really where we're moving towards, trying to move in that direction.
While we're still on it, may I just ask, so does Crammy get the Chamber to help support their apple blossom time, I think they call it?
I think they were doing other, they did have a contract. I don't know what they have this year. I'm not in Crammy, but I believe they had a contract for some other tourism and promotion sort of projects that they had on the go. I don't know what they were, but they did have some work that they were doing for them.
Yeah, and just to that, we can't get this all out to the public, because for some reason, nobody wants to come here to report anymore. So how do we get that message out to the public? Because I really don't want to explain it to everybody all the time.
I don't know. I think it's our job sometimes to do that, as much as maybe we don't want to, but I think it's important that we all have clarity on what we're doing with that and what our intention is as far as...
Yeah, but that doesn't, that doesn't get the information out to the public. That's my only concern.
Well, maybe we can come up with a way to do that.
Okay, thanks.
Go ahead, Counsel Anderson.
You've done a good job explaining this to the end. They did ask for $17,000 to do Applefest, and I...
That was the value they put on it.
I know the value, the value. So they've, everything's value here. But $17,000 from $10,000 is a real jump, so...
They're not asking for any more?
No, no.
They're showing the value.
I know.
They're showing the alleged.
All right, but still, when we're thinking about these things, it's sort of in the back of your mind, what's required for them to run their operation, but...
I think part of it is that we want to work with them, so we want to be able to provide them with the funds they need in order to do these jobs for us. So really, we just need to decide what it is we want done and what value we put on it, really. That's, at the end of the day, that's what we need to do.
I'll just make one more comment.
Okay.
As Mary has a good comment. All this information flying around, and people aren't getting information, we don't have any media in this town anymore hardly.
I know.
And I tell you, that's something that we need, we should be stepping up to look into somewhere down the road to...
I think it's incredibly dangerous when the government starts involving itself in the media.
I agree with you.
If the media wants to come here and report, they should come here and report.
Well, we should be inviting them. That's what I mean.
I have invited, I have invited, this is way off topic.
I know, I know, but I made a good point there. I just, I...
Oh, you did.
No, I know, but I have invited the radio stations and reminded the newspaper people that we still get a, it's only, it's down to all of eight pages now, but we still get a newspaper in Brighton and community, what's it's called, from the other way, comes here as well and doesn't report. So that's, well, no, hopefully, it goes to the material recovery facility in your gray barn.
I just wanted to say that.
Okay, so we're going to go back to Economic Development. Any other questions on Economic Development? We needed to decide what we're doing with the Chamber contract, and go ahead, Counsel Bateman.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I think I'm agreeing with you. I like having the Chamber still...
But you're not sure. Pretend, pretending you're agreeing.
We'll just, we'll just say we are. And I'm not overly concerned it goes up to 11,000, because last year was the first year that they did it, so they really didn't know they were getting into. But we've partnered, I think that's a multi-year deal that we have with the, or is it year by year with Quinney Economic or the Bay of Quinney?
No, that's, that's multi-year.
And Ben, he hasn't been here for an Applefest. You came on after Applefest? Yeah, so I'm in agreement. We have to see how things are working before we can measure that they work, because we don't have anything to measure yet. So I would let them do the Applefest, because I don't think you're going to get the volunteers like you used to, because every organization that had volunteers, they're dwindling. So to think you're going to grow Applefest volunteer when all the other organizations are shrinking because they're aging out, it's just not going to happen.
Yeah, I know. Thanks.
So Deputy Mayor, it sounds like we're in agreement that we should be cutting back on that tourism piece, adding an extra grand or so to help out with the Applefest piece, and see if we can move forward here.
Is everyone kind of in agreement with what we talked about there? Is that okay? Okay, Counsel LeBlanc.
I waited patiently till everybody outside their turn, Deputy Mayor. I think we should give our Economic Development Guy one year to look at all this and the next year's budget. He'll have looked at where the barometers are. We have the DBIA, they're going to be able to tell if these kiosks are working and bringing business downtown, because they have a great committee. I attended one of them. And I think we should give it all, and we should give the Economic Development Guy his first year to come up, and next year, he'll say what works, what doesn't work, where we can improve and where we can't. So it's hard to put him on the spot. He's only been here for three or four months, and he's been working on selling industrial land. So we've got to give him his first budget.
Okay, so I think I got an out of heads that we're in agreement on that. Is there anything else we want to discuss in this operating Economic Development budget tonight? Linda, you're clear on the changes we are going to make, and, right, the amounts?
Yeah, I am, and I've got them already noted. You may want to consider, in the Economic Development budget, using some of the reserves for the community events, because I believe Counsel Rowley was bringing up maybe adding $2,000 to the community events budget. That didn't come up just now, but...
That was my next question.
Okay. I believe that, I believe that that was going to happen, and perhaps to soften that this year, that we use a little bit of the community events reserve, which I thought had a little more than 11,000, yeah, 11,300 in right now. And Applefest reserve also has 12,700 in. So if you're looking at ways to decrease budgets a little bit, they do have reserves for that.
Okay, thanks. Emily, did you want to talk about community events right now?
Yeah, I just, and, so I don't have an issue with that, Linda, to a degree, if we have to take a couple of thousand dollars out. Like I say, I know we're going to be meeting again, and I need to review the notes that I got from my community events Chair, who's away, and I dropped them, left them home. However, if we take them out this year out of reserves, how will that affect next year? I know it's only $2,000, but we want to make it an annual extra expense, I guess, to put into the community events. If we're savings, without changing dollars, we're obviously saving 10-5, if I'm figuring right from the, from the Chamber contract. We could take two out of that, that still leaves 8-5, just to leave the dollars in. I don't know if that's...
This is a civic awards year, isn't it?
This is an awards year.
So we have the 2,000 in the budget this year.
We have 2,000, but it's not enough.
So next year, you want, oh, I see, you don't have enough with that 2,000 for this year.
No, we're, we haven't finalized all of our details, but we're already at the $2,000 mark. So my suggestion is that we put 2,000 annually, so that every other year, we have at least $4,000 to work with, which still puts on a fairly cheap event.
So this year, though, you can pull from your reserve, and next year, we can add 2,000, even though you don't have the event, and then...
Make it an annual deduction.
Does that make sense?
Is that...
Go ahead, Linda.
I think what's driving the impact to the community events this year is not only that $2,000, but also the monies for the movies in the park.
Exactly.
And so you have a double impact there. That's why I was suggesting perhaps a $2,000 withdrawal from the reserve for that.
I'm okay with that, if we can just reconsider then how that all will work next year, right? Right?
And I think the community events does a great job. I think the movies in the park is a great idea, so I mean, I'm totally in support of, you know, an increased budget, this makes sense. When these are, you know, we don't get to do a lot of these fun things, so it's nice to have a few fun things in our budget.
And it's still all volunteer-driven, right?
Exactly.
I mean, I think we get a good bang for our buck, as far as what the Community Events Committee does. They work hard. We've got good volunteers. Counselor Bateman and I sit there. But yeah, it does, it does become tight when you want to kind of add to Canada Day, some of the bigger events that we try to do. And even with the concerts, you know, music, bands, gas goes up, we pay more year after year. So if we could just consider that, like I said, before this whole budget exercise is over, I might have to bring another comment or two, but I'm, I'm okay with that, Linda, if we take 2,000 out this year, if we can just kind of add it as a $2,000 expenditure every...
Go ahead, Counsel Tadman, and then Counsel Anderson.
I've sat on that committee, and it's a, it's a real struggle to put on a good event on the cheap, and I think it's time we quit doing on the cheap. And I think that your recommendation to put 2,000 in each year is a good recommendation, but I would add to that and put 3,000 a year, each year, and then...
Counselor Tadman, I'll take that quite nicely. Thank you very much.
Well, it's $1,000 to go from cheap to something spectacular.
That's right, exactly, exactly. The event is going to change this year a little bit. You know, over the years, we've had a gala evening. You know, that's, that's becoming a bit expensive for the recipients that bring their family. It's basically, they pay for the event to come and eat and watch people get awards. So there is a bit of a change, but like I say, we need a few extra dollars in that. So we can consider that next year, though.
Yep. Is that a follow-up?
And the concerts in the park are amazing. I don't go and sit through them all, but it's full there, and it's very popular, and I want to see that continue, and I want them to be able to get good movies. And it's a good family outing. So actually, I guess it's not so bad when you get a crowd of people, because they have more choice who they like to fight.
Yeah. I had someone comment who doesn't live in Brighton that happened to drive through Brighton. They said, "You've got music going during the weekend." Yeah, we do. Isn't it cool when you drive through and you hear the music going? So anyway, sorry. Go ahead, Counsel Anderson.
Were any costs involved with the decorating was great this year in the park, Christmas decorating.
DBIA did that.
So I don't know if they're increasing their budget this year or anything, or does it come back to us to help them, or...
I think, I think the DBIA's comment would be that they plan to invest a similar amount of money every year to create a more robust display year over year. The lights that you saw on the side of the stage, Wayne, were they $5,000? The $4,000 for just those two lights? So the intent is for them, and I don't think I'm speaking out of turn, to invest that money year over year, so that they increase the display year over year.
Microphone, microphone.
Anything we can do to help support them, I think, until they get caught up to the point where they feel, everybody says, "Wow." But they're off to a good start of, they really are, so...
I'd like to take on to just what Counsel Anderson said. As far as that goes, yes, DBIA is responsible for a lot of the decorations, whether it's the planters or the flowers in the summer. It makes the municipality look good from the cost for what the DBIA puts in. So we need to offer a bit of gratitude for that, and maybe at some point, a little cost sharing.
I'm good. Thank you. Counsel Bateman?
I'm just in the mood to agree. I agree with Counsel, I have to, I can't do it at home. I agree with Council Rowley and Council Tadman. If you look at the sheet that we're looking at, economic and community development, the first line is tourism and promotion. If we're not going to invest in the community events, you know, you might as well ignore that first line.
Exactly.
And, you know, we're really handcuffing our economic development offers that we've all been begging to have. So, you know, you're not going to draw tourists in to stare at our sidewalks. They're going to come for the stuff that the DBI puts on, the community events committee puts on. That's what they're going to come for, so...
Anything else that we have to discuss in this section? Go ahead, Council LeBlanc.
Through you, Deputy Mayor. When we're talking about community events, one of the things I heard a lot of, the Apple Fest is Friday, Saturday, Sunday. And with all the vendors that are there on Saturday, a lot of the people showed up and they were looking for the vendors on Sunday. A lot of other places closed their main street for all week. Would it make sense to have the vendors here for two days instead of just one?
I think closing the street for two days and doing that for two days, staff are going, "No." It's so much work. And actually, this, you can see an Apple Fest budget here, but all the time that's put into Apple Fest by staff, like, to add another day, I just don't think we're there right now. We're already having a hard time making this happen with who we have, with what we have. And you know what? I get. It would be great to have it two days. I just can't see it right now. Any other comments on this section?
Do you want more? Once again, for Ben, creating the economic development committee, are there dollars in your budget that will cover that if it does get started this year?
Yes, there is. It would be part of the administration budget.
Okay, are we satisfied with this? Of course you're not.
Just one more question, and also for our economic development and communications manager. Ben, you and I have spoken about swag. It's this product with the Brighton logo on it, whether it's pens or anything. Is this, would this kind of thing be included in your budget for, you know, investors that are coming to the community that they can take away or just, you know, when we have a speaker come, anything like that?
In my report, I sort of allude to a couple different promotional marketing-type campaigns. One was to do with photography and really boosting our sort of photo library that we can offer for different... I've actually found a solution that will maybe not have to use maybe some money that I had in my head or I had set aside for that type of project. So, there's definitely some funds available that we can look at doing something that looks really good. I don't think it's going to take a lot of money to get, you know, a few things done up, so absolutely is the answer to your question.
And when you're looking for photos, don't forget to reach out to our friends at the Bay of Quinney Regional Tourism Group and Northumberland County because they have lots of photos, too.
Actually, Northumberland County is where my, very well, yeah, big breakthrough came from.
And actually, that is a good idea. You know, there's times where you want to be able to hand out a Brighton pen or, you know, as council members, you know? Even when we wear the pin, people always ask what the pin is and so it'd be nice to have a little bit more of that sort of thing. Go ahead, Council Tadman.
Thank you. Once again, I always think how important it is when the mayor and some councils go off to any convention that they have staff present because you get the, you know, more bang for your buck, the more you've got and the more expertise that you're bringing with you. Is there something in this budget, Ben, that you'll be able to at least attend a couple of conferences?
Not for 2020, no.
I think there should be. That's my personal opinion and I do believe that such things as up at Vito's, you know, where you pull the sign up and then it stands, and he needs to have the equipment to sell the place. So, I think there has to be a little, if he is going there to promote, he's not going to promote himself. You know, he wants to be able to at least have something, a booth or something. So, I think we need to consider that if we're that serious about promoting Brighton, we've got to give him the tools to do the job.
Ben, did you want to comment on that?
So, I absolutely agree. Eventually, getting to the point where I can promote at a trade show-type setting or conference or convention, what have you. Just to note, Quinney Economic Development Commission, who we are partners with, that is one of the main things that we're paying them to do, is to go to these Site Selectors Guild conferences and meeting with these people from various industries. So, we do have, from a regional component, people out there looking out for Brighton and they have all our information. Just to sort of put your minds at ease so you do know we are being represented, even though it's not being done by me as of right now. But that is a huge portion of where our fees that would go to the QEDC, what would be going to send people in, their staff, off to these conferences and trade shows.
Okay, thank you. Council Tadman, then Bateman?
Just to follow up on that, other, like, Quinney West and their people, and they get to talk firsthand with, at trade shows especially. I'm not thinking so much as conventions as trade shows. So, I'm just thinking, you know, soon as he gets really his feet wet and that baby born and getting on, I think that we need to put some money for him to actually be able to promote Brighton.
Yep.
Because I know that Northumberland County does and I've sat around here long enough to know that Quinney West does, but, you know, they're, they're going to be pushing for their own place first. People that go from the Trenton Economic, not the whole of Quinney West. Same with Belville, anywhere else, so...
Sorry, Deputy Mayor. QEDC is what the, our economic development manager mentioned and they are Belville, Quinney West, and Brighton.
Yeah, I know.
So, it's all three of them.
Yeah, I know.
But I agree. I mean, this is a whole area that we need to work on. There's no doubt about it. So, go ahead, Council Bateman.
Thank you. I was just going to touch on a point that Council Tadman, the pop-up signs that she's making reference to. I think that would be a good investment, even if it wasn't going to trade shows because a lot of our events are not a specific date. So, if you had it, you could say, because Apple Fest is always, what, the last weekend in September? Our community events, our concerts in the park are always on a set day and you're only running about $250. So, that might be something where all the committees could chip in from their budget. And if you had something that was date-specific, Willow sells them and they're retractable, you pay an extra $80 and you can change that roll every year. So, it might be a good investment if all the committees got together and put their generic events on it and that that would advertise. Because then you could move it around wherever you want. Where, you know, if you're at the arena and there's a big ball tournament going on, somebody pops it up and that type of stuff.
Yep. Lots of great ideas. Okay, so, are we satisfied with this budget as it is? Yeah?
I'm actually curious where we're at.
You're at 4.79, down from 4.94 percent tax increase.
Sorry, I was specifically referring to the total economic development operating budget. You don't know that? That's okay.
I am just tracking it in general.
You're just tracking it, so... I'm going to flip, I'm going to flip over to that comment, column in my budget binder and get you to repeat what you just said, but give me 10 seconds to get there.
One, two, three.
Go ahead.
We have reduced that budget, and I can't read that far, by $13,837.
That included the reduction to Bay Quinney Tourism, the increase to the Chamber of Commerce for Apple Fest, and the reduction of the tourism contract with the Chamber of Commerce.
Bringing us down to 4.79 percent tax increase.
Correct.
Thank you. Levy increase, rather.
Yeah, levy. Okay, so...
Tax increase.
Let's go back to general government and we'll just start working our way through. So, that's page 21 if you want to go on these pages. So, overall, we have, we have a decrease in this area. Are there any items we want to talk about, discuss, change at this point, council?
I like the general government budget the way it stands.
Is everyone in agreement with that or do we have, Council LeBlanc?
I want to come back again to the, to the physician record manager and coordinated administration assistant. I know the CAO said he was going to bring something up on Monday, the 3rd of February. But it's something that I felt that was necessary when I got elected to council and went for it last year, didn't get it done. But again, if you have a good organization with servicing and people come, when they come at the entrance, they're going to have somebody that's going to talk there. We don't have staff that's being paid a sober amount of money, have to answer the door all the time, every time it rings. They should be staying to their functions and the assistant should be directing that person that sits there.
But we have it in the budget. It is in the budget, correct?
Yeah.
So, our job is to create a budget.
Their job is to operate.
Their job is to hire, right? So, but, but we have it in the budget. It is there, correct? For the full year or is it a portion of the year?
Eight months.
Eight months. Okay. So, the idea is to get them in at one point. Any other thoughts, questions on this area or are we satisfied with this? Knot of heads? Show of hands? Whatever? Okay. So, currently, no changes. Next is health services.
I'm also okay with this budget if everyone else is, keeping in mind that we will have some hospital grants and aid to consider.
Yep. Okay. Go ahead, CAO.
Just wanted to touch base on this area and just to keep you apprised of a subsequent proposal that I recently received from the doctors group requesting some additional support of operating costs. Quite frankly, I have not had an opportunity to turn my mind to it. Mr. Parkinson and myself have been focused on a green fund application, but that is a proposal that is in my hands, on my desk, and I need to turn my mind to it shortly because it may have an impact on the 2020 budget.
So, what you're saying is this could change?
It could, it could change, absolutely. The $245,000, as our treasurer has indicated, is $200,000 going in and out and $25,000 for physician recruitment and $20,000 to support a new nurse practitioner. But there is this third proposal that will be coming forward for council's consideration in the not-too-distant future.
Okay. So, right now, we can just kind of earmark it that we're okay with it as it is, but there may be some changes that we need to look at yet. Go ahead, Council Rowley.
Thank you. Just to the CAO's comment regarding the $25,000 for physician recruitment, that's based on the contract that we signed or approved last year with Pam, is it, from Trenton?
So, through you, Madam Chair, it's based upon the contract. Having said that, our partners are contributing $50,000 each per year. So, I know that this group will be coming forward and discussing a equal contribution and moving our contribution from $25,000 to $50,000. So, that request will be coming forward on the evening that we invite all of the external agencies to come and speak to you. I've had some pre-discussions with Paula and that'll be coming forward as early as next week.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
What's in the budget now for physician recruitment? The same, 25? Thank you.
Council Bateman?
Thank you. I just want to clarify, so that's, that 25 is the Quinney, since we partnered Quinney physician recruitment?
Anyone else?
I think it's a fan that was basically, we replaced a fan many years ago. It was clunking away like crazy. You remember that? You think that's what that is?
That's right. We might need to add something to the building budget, fix that. Okay, next is fire and you may...
I just want to backtrack to the health services budget here for a second. We're going to get asked to go from 25 to 50. The original request was 50. We agreed to come in for $25,000 or we agreed, they agreed to come to us if we paid $25,000. I don't think it should be a surprise to any of us that they'd ask us for equal contribution that the other organizations are paying. When we have that discussion, I'm not sure whether we'd be doing it in open council or not, but I'm wondering if they would let us stage it up over, over time. And that's a conversation maybe we need to have with them. That's all. Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to fire. Okay, we have the fire budget in front of us. There are a few increases that the chief already explained. Any other discussion we want to have? Comments, suggestions? Are we happy with it? CAO, waving at me.
Just a, just a comment and as a means of breaking the tension in here for a moment or so, perhaps as you deliberate upon the fire protective services budget, you could chat with the chief to ask him why he's here tonight.
Why are you here tonight, chief? Yeah, why are you here? You weren't supposed to be here.
Well...
In fact, Facebook has you checked in at the Marriott.
Yes, well, I was checked in at the Marriott earlier today. I was, I will tell you, correspondence went back and forth between myself and the CAO with regard to the meet, tonight's meeting and it was indicated that my budget might take a substantial hit if I wasn't here. So, I felt it would be in my and the department's best interest to be here to ensure that if there was any questions, they were answered.
Thank you.
I thought maybe he had the same news as Ben.
Give your head a shake, Mary.
Were you back in time to commit to reading in the library today, chief?
That was Monday before I left.
Oh.
Okay. Let's take a look at the fire department budget. We can just cut out that last little section of conversation. We're all good with this? Council Bateman has a question, comment?
Just a question on the one section because we acknowledge everything, everything goes up every year, hydro and stuff, but we collect rent from Northumberland County for the paramedics. Do they pay more every year for their rent?
That is, through you, Deputy Mayor, that is part of an agreement with them and I guess there is an annual increase.
Okay.
That's a great name. Jack, right? You know, I mean to play Jack. Right in the slum line.
Okay, and now we are moving on to police services. We're having this delegation next week. Do we want to discuss this tonight? I mean, we can agree in principle to where we're at, but, I mean, nothing is much going to change, so...
I don't know that there's much to debate here.
Exactly.
We can have all the discussion we want. We're at the bare bones of any contract we're ever going to get, so with the exception of saying to the province, "We're not paying this."
They were members of council who wanted increased service. That's why, that's what I mean, like, but...
I think we need to have that discussion on Monday.
That's what I, that's what I'm talking about. There's no sense in, we're going to have a discussion on Monday. That's my point. I have to explain everything to him.
Zevon.
Zevon. Okay. I think we need a candy break. We're getting a little punchy. Anyone having candies? Any candies?
I have candies upstairs.
Go get the candies.
Give me a five-minute break.
We're going to take a five-minute break. And we're going to move on with public works. Right? Yes. Okay, so we have the public works budget before us. It's a very large budget. There's a 17 percent increase. We've heard all the changes. Any comments, suggestions, thoughts from council on this? Are we satisfied with it? Go ahead, Council LeBlanc.
Just on the three, Deputy Mayor, two director of public works, on streetlights. Where you have streetlights. Down at the, it was brought to my attention by an individual down by the arena, going to the golf courses, the streetlights face into the parking lot. There's none facing onto the street, but after the tennis court, they face into the street and before the tennis, before the arena, they face into the street. street, and before the, before the arena, they face into the street. Is there any way of having streetlights that face into the street and into the parking lot there? Because when I went to Carrington, they have both, into the parking lot and into the street. I wonder if that was in your budget?
Through you, Deputy Mayor. It wasn't identified as an issue, but we can certainly look into it to see if anything can be done, or if there's a problem, or at least evaluate.
It was brought up last year.
Anyway, we're talking about, is there a budget implication to that, or is, that you're suggesting or asking about, or?
I just wanted to know if it was, if it wasn't, if it isn't in there, it probably should be added, because if we have streetlights, we should light up our streets.
Mayor, do you have a comment?
Always.
Almost always, you're right.
She thinks I said Mary, but I said mayor.
I think that's something that has to...
Oh, she thinks she's talking.
Yes.
She thinks you said Mary, or mayor, but you said mayor. Is that correct?
Yes, sorry.
So it's, it's my turn, actually. My question is through you, Deputy Mayor, to the Director of Public Works at Infrastructure. The winter control budget is going up almost $200,000. You did mention you're bringing in line to what we've experienced, actually experienced, and I'm curious if you could just provide some narrative around that for us.
The additional cost is sand and primarily salt. So two things, that we weren't budgeting the correct amount every year, so they were just overspending, and then the amount has actually gone up this year by about $8 or $9 a ton. So there's an increase in cost, plus we weren't necessarily budgeting the correct amount to begin with.
Have we gone over other years? Is that the issue? Over budget in that area another year?
Yeah, my understanding, it's been multiple years that it's gone over.
Okay, thank you. Council Tadman?
I just want to correct something here. What happened just a while ago? I have been known for years as the mayor, like in the old gray mayor. So I don't know what happened there, but I thought I was supposed to speak, so just want to make that clear. But anyways, the, what Doug's talking about is important, but I think it's too late now to add it to the budget until we get a staff report, if that's okay with you, counselor?
If it's fine with me.
Okay.
Anyone else on this budget? Are we satisfied with it as it is? Council Rowley?
I'm going to wait to ask my question later on, not here.
Sidewalk question, go ahead.
Again, through you to the Director of Public Works in Infrastructure with regard to the sidewalk expenditures. I presume that some of that will be finishing the project, the Main Street project. What else is included in there?
Maintenance.
So through you, Deputy Mayor, so just to clarify, which amount are you referring to? The capital contracted work?
No. I'm talking about the sidewalk expenditures in your operating budget of $93,905.
Yeah, so it includes what didn't get done last year, and then a larger program this year. But that number will have to be in there, or a number similar to that, for probably three to four years to get us to the accessibility standards that we need to meet, and then deal with deficiencies and repairs.
Thank you. That's important to this community, so thank you very much.
So, and these sidewalks are in operating because they're existing sidewalks that we're repairing rather than new sidewalks, correct?
Yeah, we would put it in capital if we were doing like a whole street or, or something like that, but when we're doing the little bits and repairs that, around the community as they're identified with their markers, it goes into maintenance.
So this $93,000, how much is this going to get done, I guess? What area of sidewalks are we looking at doing? It is a big concern, and we do hear a lot of complaints about it, so it's good for us to have a clear answer on it.
Well, the Director of Finance might have to clarify the $93,000 a little further, but the capital amount I have for contracted sidewalk replacement is currently at $279,000. So that's, that's a fairly substantial program.
Overall.
That's right.
So some of it is existing sidewalk, and some of it is larger sections, so it's put in the capital, is that correct? Go ahead, Linda.
Okay, so just, just so I can clarify for Preston and for council, how, how the budget works, we have to put our revenues in as well as our expenditures, and council may recall that last August, Preston brought a report forward and requested to do this large sidewalk project, and in addition to what he already had in the budget of $60,000. And what happened was, we had an extra, like our federal gas tax was doubled, and he proposed that we use federal gas tax to fund that. So of the $60,000, or, sorry, $120,000 last year, there was $11,196 left at the end of the year, plus a transfer from the federal gas tax of $208,000, and then he had $279,000 in, in his expenditures. So they all get net together in that summary page that you're looking at. So that's why it looks a little like it's only $93,000, but it's actually $279.
Does that clarify it for everyone? At the end of the day, I guess we all want to know that we're going to get a lot of sidewalks done, right? Go ahead, Council Tadman.
I don't remember as I went through here, and I could have missed it, which, which sidewalks are the major ones that you're doing this year? The new ones?
There's no list in this budget. We'll evaluate again in the spring to see where the target areas are, but primarily the south side of Main Street will be one of the areas hit for sure, because we already did the other side.
Yeah, and there's been some screaming along Cedar Street, so we don't know at this point whether we're going to do any of that.
We won't be touching Cedar Street at all. It's not included in this budget.
Okay.
Council Rowley, I think I saw your hand up. Is that... Yeah, my question was kind of similar, because we started a Main Street project last year, and that kind of fell to the sidewalk. And so now it's, this is going to be re-tendered, so much of these monies is going back to fix and maintain what wasn't done last summer. Am I correct?
That's correct. So when we bring the report forward to award the tender, because it's over our signing authorities, there'll be a list attached of the areas that we're going to target and replace. So council will have a chance to see, and they'll have a document that says, you know...
On, on Main Street particularly?
Yeah, Main Street. It could be a bunch of Main Streets, Elizabeth.
That's right, because that was, that was going to be a significant project, and it didn't work out well, so...
Yeah, there were complications, so we minimized the scope of that project.
That's right. Okay, thanks. I have one more question.
Go ahead.
I just want to go to the second line. Public Works Administration is increasing by $237,755. Is that just staffing?
So it's increased positions, and then the pretend estimated increase for 2020 through negotiations for the contracts.
So some of these are the new positions that we've already approved?
What contract were you talking about?
The QP contract.
QP contract. What I'm saying, these are some of the new positions that we approved, that we're, we're filling.
We've approved all of the positions?
Yeah. And the org chart. So they're just implementing them now. They weren't part of last year's budget. That's why it looks like a large amount. Did you want to comment yet?
The Sanford Street, I, I'm assuming, and I shouldn't do that, that during that road reconstruction, it's part of your capital budget, and the sidewalk will be replaced at that time as well.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Anything else on this? Go ahead, Council Tadman.
Just to reassure all the people that are sitting in the audience and the rest of council, I think that what you just said is, is mandatory now for us. So, yeah, so we, anytime we reconstruct, we will be putting a sidewalk in, correct?
In most urban situations, yes. Yeah.
Okay. Any other comments? So I just need to know if we're satisfied with this budget as it is? Yes? You have to nod your heads or something. It's a big one. Yes. I'm, I'm not sure what that is.
You cannot make the suggestion.
Exactly. Okay, are we good? Next is bylaw enforcement.
Mr. Castleman said he was going to discuss something with us in camera tomorrow.
Next week?
Tomorrow night?
Yeah, next week, that's what I meant. It'll come soon enough.
As far as bylaw, so, I mean, we can decide whether we're satisfied as it is, but we may have to circle back to this, right? And we did have a bit of discussion on this, so... Go ahead, Council LeBlanc.
Sorry, my memory failed me. Could I go back to public works?
You can.
Through you, Deputy Mayor, to Director of Public Works. In August, we, we approved a motion for basically ditching and brushing for $120,000 over a three-year period for each year. Is that in your expenditure budget here?
Yes, currently it is, yes.
Yeah, it's not a line item though anymore. Split it up.
No, but in the greater detail, it's in there as $120,000 for brushing, and $60,000 contracted work for ditching.
Yeah, and that's, okay, I just want to make, I don't see it as a line item.
Where is it lumped into, Linda? Do you know which line it's lumped into, just for reference?
It's lumped, it's lumped into the roadway maintenance expenditures.
On page 26, roadway maintenance expenditures, it's about what, six or seven down? Okay?
Yeah.
Okay. So everyone's clear? Council Rowley?
$60,000 for contract work and for ditching use at Preston. Is that something our staff can't do? We don't have equipment, or they can't do it?
Yeah, we don't necessarily have the equipment to do it, but that contracted work provides money to either rent maybe an excavator, or to hire an operator with an excavator, plus larger tri-axle trucks to haul material away.
Go ahead.
I'm just helping Brett Preston look great.
Okay.
Last year, we talked about this, right, and we felt that contracting out was financially the best way to go.
Exactly.
Because if we take all our, our staff to do that, they don't have the expertise or the equipment to do it properly, so I think in the end, it's better the way we're doing it now. And I think we didn't, people got a little mad that they didn't like the looks of some of the trees chopped in half, but if they really stopped and thought about it, if we, we would have to raise the taxes 100% to go and trim each tree properly. So I think they got over that after they saw the greenery coming.
And more importantly, we'll hear from another group this year, right? It won't be the same people angry this year, it'll be different.
Yeah, and then those people will see that they do come back, and then maybe we could show them pictures, that it'll be okay.
Like a bad haircut takes about two weeks.
That's right.
Okay, so are we really done with public works, or are we just ready to move on?
Ready.
Okay, so bylaw, there may be some changes to the bylaw. Are we okay with it as it is right now? We will probably circle back to this, right? Okay. Building, we need to add a few thousand dollars for a fan, but other than that, I'm good.
No, this is the building.
Oh, okay, sorry.
And revenue, we're good there.
It's almost 8 o'clock. It's past my bedtime. Building revenue, there's, yeah, there's nothing to do there. Parks and Rec, we have a lot here to talk about, well, there's a lot here to look at. Anyone have questions, comments, concerns, ideas? Everyone's pretty quiet.
The bottom line for the department is a, is a paltry 2% increase, and, you know, I, good work, Mr. Miller, that's all I'm going to say.
Yeah, are we satisfied with this? Go ahead, Council Bateman.
Yeah, I'm, I'm satisfied. It's just more of a, so I understand and learn here. Under the, in the budget for Mount Hope Cemetery, it drops substantially.
What's the reason for the drop? It's good that it dropped, but just so I can understand.
Well, I think the computer, software, there's a big drop in there, up near the top. Plus, there was a reallocation of wages.
Can you actually just say that again? I couldn't hear all of it.
There's a considerable drop in cost of software.
Yep.
That's almost $10,000.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so that, between that and a bit of a drop in the reallocation of wages from our department up there, that's why.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion that we need to have on this area? So Parks and Rec, we're good. Planning Services? Yep, so we're not going to discuss that. We've already talked about economic development. Environmental Services?
Still any time.
This is all rate-supported. We're all good with this? Environmental Services? Go ahead, Council Tadman.
I just wondered if there is any reason why Ben still has to stay here, since he might be having some...
I don't think it's immediate. It's, it's that we don't want to count on him being at the other meetings if...
But if he's not, if not necessary, he's going to have a few weeks of sleepless nights, so can he be?
We'll let him make those decisions. Yeah.
I'm fine. Are you okay?
Exactly.
I'm on drive yet.
That's all right. It's my job. We are counselors, not mothers. Well, we are mothers, but you know what I mean. Tonight, we are not mothers. Let's just move on.
Never stop being a mother, you know that.
Yes, I do. Okay, environmental services, we've, no other discussion on that, right?
No.
Okay, so that is our operating budgets for tonight. What are we talking about next? What do we want to look at next? I don't want to do it tonight, but I think we just, so we have an idea, right, where we're going next meeting?
I think it would be your opportunity to start talking about grants and aid.
Yeah, okay. And the other?
And your external budgets.
External budgets and grants and aid next meeting, okay, everyone? Just to give us, so I don't have to look it up, what is our, we have a target amount for grants and aid. What is that amount?
I have to look it up, too.
Yeah, I know. I'm just being lazy.
Just a little bit more than $139,000.
We just have to keep that in mind as we're going through them. Okay, I think that's everything for tonight. Council Bateman, did you have a question?
I just wanted to make a comment. I didn't realize how noisy this side of the room was.
Oh, sorry.
You're welcome. Every minute of it, don't you?
Okay, back to our agenda. Number seven, we have question period. Are there any questions from our loyal audience members? No. You don't count?
I count right now.
Go ahead, Mary. Sorry, Council Tadman, don't want to confuse things.
A bit late, but my taxi was late.
It's okay.
And I think I sent it to everybody about what was happening today in Toronto with the super conference. Did you get that? I think it's an honor that they were chosen to go there and speak. And so I don't know how we get that out to the public, but...
Yeah, I saw it on Facebook. I don't know if maybe on our Brighton Facebook page, we can pick it up as well to put it out there?
Maybe.
About our digital archives group who are in Toronto. Yeah.
Would you get one? I didn't...
Yeah, if we can pick that up and do some promotion of it, that would be good. Totally off topic. Go ahead. Oh, it is. Well, go ahead. The mayor's requested, before we adjourn, he has something he'd like to talk about.
So everyone received a letter from Mrs. Anderson from 898 Smith Street on their desk. I believe Council Anderson has declared on this, but I think it would be appropriate. Mrs. Anderson has asked us to speak about this at budget, so I think it would be appropriate to do so. This is with regard to the sidewalk we have agreed to install at municipal taxpayers' expense on the Coortha Pine Ridge District School Board's property. And Mrs. Anderson is objecting to said installation. So I'm curious if it's, if it is in the budget and at what stage we're at in the process.
I didn't get a copy of that letter, so I'm not sure of the contents, but directly to answer your question, it is included in that budget. It's about $7,500, I think. And that was a result of the engineering study where we can't install it along our roadway because council expressed the desire of getting a pedestrian walk for the children and parents to get to the public school. And currently, that's the only location we can physically put it that's safe for the children and can be physically constructed, given the constraints of the nearby street.
So even if council said that that's not an appropriate spot, we don't want it there, we don't want to be investing in school board property, we could not install it anywhere else? Is that what, is that what I'm hearing from you?
That's correct.
Thank you very much.
And it was a decision of council already to install there?
It was. Madam Clerk, would you please get a copy for Mr. Parkinson for his records? Thank you very much. I thought it was, it was, the constituent asked for us to discuss it, so I thought it was important to bring up. Thank you very much.
Okay, good. Any else, anything else before we go to adjourn? I mean, this is committee of the whole, so we have a little bit more leeway, but anything else budget-wise? Okay. We have no in-camera session, so I have a motion to, I have a motion to receive the capital budget deliberations. Should I have done that already?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll do both of these. So I have a motion that council receive the 2020 capital budget deliberations. It's moved by Council Bateman and seconded by Council Anderson, all in favor. And I have a motion to adjourn, moved by Council Anderson and moved by Council, seconded by Council Bateman, so that council adjourned the January 29, 2020 Committee of the Whole Meeting at 8:02.
I have a question, given that we just debated the operational budget and we passed a motion to accept the capital budget.
Thank you.
Should that have read capital, or operational, rather?
I think it should.
Okay.
Everyone okay with me changing that?
Did we, did we accept that or receive that? I thought you read, said receive. So receive means it's not totally accepted.
Yeah, just receive the information.
We're just receiving.
We haven't, we haven't passed the budget by any stretch.
Yeah, when we're all done, we'll send it off, too.
But it said capital instead of operation. Right.
Okay. We're good with that one? Should I read this one again?
Counsel adjourned the January 29, 2020 Committee of the Whole Budget meeting at 8, now have to change the number, 8:03 PM.
All in favor? And we're adjourned.